Many things are highlighted in red. Those are the changes that I'm going to be discussing this afternoon. Our proposed state revenue, based on, it's no longer based on the governor's proposed budget. Now it is based on what came out of the General Assembly. And that affords us an increase in revenue of eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We did still see reductions in some of the other areas. And much of this proposed state funding increase is really driven by compensation. As you will remember, the, the governor originally had proposed a bonus, a two percent bonus. He has since changed that and they have come out of the General Assembly with a five percent increase for SOQ-funded positions. And I'm going to talk about those in just a minute. Once again, this budget that I'm presenting to you this afternoon is based on the General Assembly's compery budget. Thirty-two point eight percent, which is a little bit less than what we had originally thought was going to come from our locality. Or point eight percent funding will become, we will be requesting from the county government. You remember, last week I told you it would be one and a half percent, and now it's just point eight percent, an increase. Our priorities have remained the same, and they are employee compensation and student success, and that has not changed. The difference though, is what the teacher's salary would look like if it is indeed, this is the budget that is adopted. You know now, right now, Dimwitty County, the starting salary for teachers is forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. What we're proposing now for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is that we raise the base of teacher's salary to forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And you can see that that's that number or that bar there in the red. This would be really great if no other county or no other city increases their teacher salaries. But everybody will be doing pretty much the same. But just wanted to give you a perspective as to where we would end up if we raised it to forty-six-five, which would raise the base two thousand dollars. The bulk of the money that we'll be requesting from the Dimwitty County Government is indeed about compensation. One point three million dollars will be for, it's costing us one point three million dollars to do the teacher raises. Instead of it being a five percent average, or instead of it being at least a two percent. We opted to see what it would look like if we did indeed raise that base by five percent. And make certain that every employee group received a five percent increase. So that will afford teachers in a five percent to almost an eight percent increase. As you know, our teacher's salary scale is based on, we call it the loyalty factor. Meaning the longer you're with us, the bigger the raise is as you move up in your steps. So some of our teachers would indeed have an eight percent increase. That will cost us about one point three million dollars. For all other employee groups, we are recommending a five percent increase, and that will cost us around five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And once again, this does address some of those minimum wage increases for our bus aides. And that's the beginning of trying to get everyone closer to that fifteen dollar minimum wage. So what we're proposing, if you remember last week I came and I said that we would need about one point three million dollars from the county. We went back after we received our first iteration of information from the State Department. That actually ended up being about one point four million dollars by the time we were ready to send it out on Friday. But luckily, now that the General Assembly has finished their work, it looks like it's going to be around one point two million dollar. Thirty-two point eight percent of our operating budget would come from the locality, which is just a point eight percent of our fiscal year twenty. And remember, there was no increase in fiscal year twenty-one. So it's an average of about six hundred thousand dollars if you think about it for each year. This gives you a sense of where all of the revenue comes from, the county transfer. You can see the change there of one point two million dollars. We're going to see an overall state increase of one point four million dollars. We're going to see a slight decrease in sales tax from the fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's more than what we expected, but less than what we had seen in previous years. And you can see a proposed revenue, a difference of two point four million dollars. And as you could see by that last slide, most of that money will be earmarked for compensation. And this just gives you a sense of where all the money comes from. The county transport being a thirty-two point eight percent of our budget. Other local being less than one percent, federal aid is less than one percent, and state revenue is about sixty-six percent. And so for the operating budget, we project revenue of forty-eight point seven million. We have put together an operating budget, a needs-based budget of forty-nine point nine, the deficit being one point two million dollars. And that's what we will be approaching the county to assist us with. And this is just where all those expenditures go to. As with every year, instructional programming is seventy percent of all the monies. Technology is about five percent, maintenance is thirteen percent. You know, it takes a lot to maintain some of these older facilities that we have. Transportation is seven percent, administration three percent, and attendance and health is a two percent of that budget. So that really concludes the changes for the operating budget. And now I'd like to move into the remaining parts of the budget, the remaining funds that are available to us so that we work through. I'm happy to pause there if you'd like to ask any questions with that, or I can continue on and we can stop at the end if you'd like. Yeah? We, we have, it is likely that it will be approved. It has come out of the General Assembly as both sides, the House and the Senate, both have agreed to the five percent. The governor's saying five percent, it just had to have the final. We have not received our COUT tools yet, but we, we feel like it's likely that that's what's going to take place. It's not a required five percent. You can, your, the raise can be anywhere from a two to a five percent. You have five percent of funds available to you based on your enrollment. So for some school districts, they are not opting to do the five percent. We are, we are recommending that we try to make it to the five percent if we can possibly get there. Because we went last year with, without any increase for employees.
So basically, we would adjust our scale and they would move forward one step. But that would be inclusive, the step would change to two to five percent?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, so here are the revenues by source. As you can see, we get twenty-one percent local monies from our local funding, three point one percent. We're going to see about one million dollars change from state revenue sources. We expect to see a difference of a two point seven million dollars. And that is really about the CARES funding, because we do receive a, we have a bit of that, and I'm going to show that to you in just a minute. A difference of nine thousand dollars in some of the transfers, for about fourteen percent increase from fiscal year twenty-one over fiscal year twenty-two. The majority of that being with the money that we've received from the federal government in light of the pandemic. And just to also give you a sense of percentage-wise, what that looks like for a total of sixty-six point one million dollar budget overall. Okay, so I'm going to break that down into various funds, so you can have a sense of those. The first is Fund Two-O-Six, that's our textbook fund. These funds are typically used for consumables, anything that's related to the curriculum, instructional software, taking on new courses. And we've used a great deal with the virtual learning as it relates to our curriculum. And you can see there, we had a beginning balance, and these are monies that we can carry over from year to year. So beginning balance of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, state revenue of three hundred and twelve. We spent about four, we expect to spend about four hundred thousand dollars next year. And with us leaving us an ending balance of four hundred and sixty-three, nine seventy-eight. A lot of times we don't spend this account because we know that we're getting ready to do a textbook adoption. So we try to leave the monies in there to make, make sure that that is available to us. I will say that this, we have seen some increases recently for licenses to programs, especially at the secondary level, and especially with CTE. Fund Two-O-Seven is for school nutrition. I will tell you, if it hadn't been for the CARES funding, this would be an area that we might have had some problems this past school year. You know, as you know, the school nutrition, Mr. Athie runs this as an independent budget. But I also want to report to the board where we are. We have, we project to have a beginning balance of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars come July first. We expect to take in about one point seven million dollars. But we expect to spend one point eight million dollars. And what that will be for is the five percent increase for all employees with an ending balance of fourteen thousand, seventy-one dollars. So that's not a lot of padding to that, that budget. But fortunately for us, you know, we are prepared and are preparing to support, if need be, the school nutrition budget. I spoke to the CARES funding. What I'm, for fiscal year twenty-two, what I, what we'll be looking at is a total revenue of two point four million dollars. And expenditures of two point four million dollars. Just to give you a sense of what some of that will go toward, you know, we've done the presentation to, for you previously about the, the first part of the coronavirus, the monies that we use. And they were typically used for cleaning supplies and facility upgrades. And some instructional programming and nutrition and special education and the like. We have some three identified needs for moving forward in the fiscal year twenty-two. The request has been made for internet expenses for families and whether or not we would continue to support those. Whether that be providing equipment. And also a special ed subscription for fiscal year twenty-two. And school nutrition has requested monies for freezer rental and packaging materials as we continue to move through fiscal year twenty-two. The reason being that, as you probably are aware, that the bill was passed, that we will be also, we will be affording students the opportunity to continue with virtual learning for next year. That will end in, excuse me, twenty twenty-two. But for the next school year, school divisions will be, should be prepared to continue with virtual learning if need be. What you see there at the bottom is the additional monies that we have just received. But we want to make sure that we leave money in, available for us through fiscal year twenty twenty-three as these monies are allocated for both of those budget years. Some of the identificate, identified needs so far are Director of Innovation, which I spoke to you at our last meeting. The Help Desk Specialist, as you know, we've taken on a great deal of equipment throughout this process. And we need somebody to assist us with manning the help desk and assisting with, being able to be responsive to our customers. And specifically our parents and students. Insurance for our Chromebooks, because we have taken on a lot more. We want to put a generator at DMS, and that is because that is the hub of where all of our, all of our technology comes from. And so if that goes down, everything really goes down, as we've seen. And so we're going to put a generator there. We're also, because facility upgrades are something that you can consider. We went and looked inside of our capital improvement plan. We found an HVAC replacements for Sunnyside that we can move to, out of the large capital requests that we've made to the county. And we can use CARES funding for that, so we can go ahead and get the HVAC done at Sunnyside, which is very exciting for us. Also, the Southside Gym, they did take care of the main building, but they did not take care of the gymnasium. So we'd like to take care of the HVAC system at Southside. We are also looking into adding learning cottages. The ones we have at Sunnyside right now are really becoming outdated, and it's almost time for them to be replaced. We thought we could add some, which would afford us the opportunity to bring more students back, because it gives us more space that we don't have in our buildings. And then when the time comes and we no longer have virtual learning, and some of these restrictions that are on us have been lifted. We will have the new modulars that the teachers can use, continue to use, and the old ones can go away. So those are just some of the requests. I will tell you that once we put out the notice asking for ideas. We have received all kinds of ideas about how we can use that CARES funding. And really, there's not, no such thing as a bad idea. So if, you know, if you have ideas relative to that, or if someone shares those with you, make sure that Christie Clark or Christie Fleming does know those. We're, we have a very large list that we're looking through, and we're, we're trying to look at everything, first of all, based on what the requirements are. And then secondly, what would be the greatest return on our investment? As we look to making those decisions very soon. Once we finalize those, we will make certain that we come back to show you exactly what's going to be paid for out of that grant.
What, can I ask a question? What schools would need the learning cottages in order to bring people back? Or some schools more in need than others?
Yes. Southside is definitely in need right now. That school is continuing, there are two schools that are continuing to grow, the middle school and Southside. I'm, I think because Mr. Snuff's been at both, we're going to blame it on Mr. Snuff. But both of those schools, their, their population and their numbers are continuing to escalate. So we may have to put a module at the middle school at some point. Sixth grade is something Dr. Gurley's been over there working with them, trying to figure out how do we? We have a lot of kids that want to come back to school now, but we don't have the space. And as you know, those classrooms are very small. They are operating, they're using every space they have available right now at Southside. And Sunnyside is also a space that we think that we might be able to use it as well. So those are the three locations. I will tell you that Midway probably could benefit from that, but they seem to be able to manage, you know, the numbers that they have currently. And they've used other classrooms. But probably just those three schools, Southside, Sunnyside, and the middle school would be most likely the locations. We've looked into renting them as opposed to buying them, but we think buying them would be the better option, especially if we can use them long-term. Thank you for that. So we are continuing to add to that. School capital is also another area that we are continually to work on. We do project, we still have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in projects that will not be completed by June thirtieth. So we project there will be a beginning balance there. As you know, the county has a ten-year capital improvement plan, and they had originally approved a large, a large number of our projects for fiscal year twenty-two. However, what we're doing now is taking a hard look at Southside and how we can approach that differently. And maybe in different phases, maybe it's not a new school, but maybe it's just, how can we update what's currently there? So we have Jimmy and his team working on taking a look at that Option Five and determining what mechanical systems need to be updated this year. We've done the HVAC, the HVAC will be completed by summer. So then now we need to get into those electrical and mechanical systems, the fire alarms, anything related to safety. So you're going to see that four point eight million dollars come down significantly. We are asking the county to provide us with, instead of the normal one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with three hundred thousand dollars moving forward. It, you know, our facilities are old, and, and I think we do a really great job maintaining them. But what's happening is that there are a lot of, like, emerging needs that maybe we weren't necessarily prepared for, that we have to address. You know, for example, we had a irrigation problem in the football field this year. And the pipe burst. And now we have somebody that comes out and works on the field and, and thank goodness, we have a coach that walks the field regularly. And really kept saying, there's something wrong with this field, I'm telling you, there's something wrong. And everybody thought it was about the amount of rain that we had had on our football field. We'll come to find out, we indeed had a pipe that burst, right, underground. So those were costs that we had not budgeted for, but that has to be fixed in order for it to be a safe playing space for our students for next year. And so that's a pretty significant amount of money, and that money will have to come out of the small capital. Because we had not funded, funded, we had not allocated any funding for that. So that's just an example of things that happen that we don't necessarily plan for. We plan for them because we have somebody maintaining the property, but you know, it's just like anything that happens at your home. So just to give you a sense of, here are some of the projects right now for fiscal year twenty-two that are currently on the large capital budget. As always, we have the buses, and we have roofs, and that cafeteria demolition is still there. It was supposed to be done this past year, but it did not, did not get done. We do need to upgrade Dimwitty Middle School with that ADA, you know, currently, if we have any students in a wheelchair in order to get to those outside classrooms, which are some of our elective classrooms, they have to go outdoors and into the back. So we do need to get that upgraded. Roof at DES, the floor replacements at Sunnyside and Midway. This track, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as with anything, the longer we wait to, to fix it, the price is going to go up. And I went out and walked the track, and it is in dire need of, that track has got to be fixed. It is not safe for kids to, to continue to run on, so we do need to make certain that we get that fixed quickly. They did a really great job on the tennis court, so the time has come for the, that. We're going to make that a priority for this year. We are working on, as I said, to revise the options for Southside. We estimated it would be around two million dollars, but we got, we're looking for estimates right now. We want to paint Sunnyside and Southside in the entire inside of the building. And then, as you know, we just had that envelope study on the soffit in the steeple at Dimwitty Elementary School. And in order to repair that, it's four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we have to repair that because, you know, I mean, that's a lot of damage and water that, that needs to be taken care of. The longer we let it go, the worse the problem is going to get. So those are large capital projects. Some of the small capital projects are the water testing that has to be done. There's been a request for roof replacement at the concessions building and the restroom building at the football field. We need to replace some of our outdated, our cars that have outlived their usefulness. We have a lot of equipment upgrades that need to, we keep pushing back year after year and the time has come to take care of those. And then replacement of a couple of maintenance trucks. And there is, as there was with the other list, there's a very long list of requests that people are making of things that they would like to see happen with the small capital money. We are working as a team though with Jimmy. And in addition to this capital plan, we need a, like a huge maintenance audit. So if we say we put in carpet at Southside in twenty twenty and we know that carpet usually is about twelve to fifteen years or ten to twelve years, then in twenty thirty, we have got to start looking at the carpets. So somewhere those artifacts have to be around for somebody to know that. It can't just be in the brain of a person. And that right now, we're very fortunate that we have a maintenance director that's very knowledgeable about that. But we've got to get all that into paper. So, or into a file so that somebody will have that access to that information and will be able to plan appropriately for things like that. And not just be reacting when emergencies happen.
Dr. Weston, is everything that's on this capital fund, is, is the county agreeing to that much?
Well, what they did was, they approved it, they approved it for the five million dollars for Southside. If you go onto their website and you see their capital plan, it says for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, it says, Southside Elementary School, five point some million dollars. But what happens, what happened is that when it comes time to start making plans for it, the actual planning of it, it, we kind of start teasing it apart like we did with the HVAC last year. They came back and said, what's the biggest priority you have right now at the school? Well, it was the HVAC. So they took the million, million point, one point five million dollars off of the five million dollars and said, let's fix the HVAC. So that's what's happening right now. So yes, the things there at the top, not the things that say new, they're not on there. Those have been submitted since we had that approved last year. And we've not had a capital improvement meeting with the county yet.
Okay.
So those are, those are relatively new. But everything above that, from Sunnyside painting and up, those were all things that were approved. And of course, the envelope study, that just happened and we found out that just in this past year. And then Southside added painting. But everything else they have approved, it's just, it's just like that cafeteria demolition. How long has that been on the plan? And it just keeps moving, they, they just move it out to the next year and then the next year and the next year. You know, and at some point it probably needs to be addressed.
Is, is the issue with that, the hazardous material that's in it?
I think that's what the recommendation was, that, you know, I mean, it's, we don't use it for anything either. I think it, you know, it came from the actual, I guess there was a study that was done in that area and it came from that. And I think what happens over time is more urgent projects take precedent, and the same as your house, right? If your air conditioning or your heat goes out, you might have been planning to replace your roof, but maybe you say, I'm going to put the roof on hold because I've got to fix this, this has got to happen in this moment. And so I think that's really what's happening. And that's, these are the kinds of things that happen, especially when you're dealing with buildings that, you know, are as old as some of our buildings are. And like our phone system there, it's not just Dimwitty Middle School phone system, Midway's phone system and the high school's phone system. We can't even get the parts for the most, you know, for, but we've been having problems with them for a while. So it's hard to find the parts we need to replace the phone system. It really should have been part of like just an automatic, it's time to redo the phones. But now it's to the point where it's like the phones work sometimes and sometimes they don't. So hopefully we're going to get us back on track. And of course, you know, we're also competing with other needs in the community as well. You know, we're one part of a bigger system. And here's your school grant funds. This includes all of our federal grants, as well as PALS and Project Graduation, Security and PIER. We did receive several Cameron, Cameron Foundation grants this year, one technology-related. One assisted us in paying for the internet equipment for our families. And then CTE also received a grant from them as well. And all of these funds, as you know, are very specific as to how you can use them. Debt service, I know you're familiar with this as well. It's, it's used to pay our debt. As you remember, this was, you can see the beginning balance was seven hundred and fifteen thousand and now the ending balance is more. And as you remember, we went through the refinance this year using the high school in an effort for them to be able to get the, the truck and HVAC system taken care of. And this is just a summary of all the funds. Beginning balance of one point four million, total transfers of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, total revenue sixty-six point one million. Total expenditures, we anticipate for fiscal year twenty-two being around sixty-five point eight with an event ending balance of all of those funds I just shared with you, two point, two million dollars. And so really the request that we've sent over to the county, as I shared with you, is really just funds, everything that we need for the whole school year. It meets all the state and federal guidelines. It's going to help with all those community expectations that we have and serve our community. I believe it's going to help us to retain the people that we have here and also to recruit a highly quality workforce and make sure that everything's aligned with what our students and our schools need. And that's the end of what the addition, and I will just say to stay tuned, as you know, we're presenting again next Tuesday. That's a joint meeting with the county and it's likely at that point, I don't anticipate there being any changes. Actually, what you might be able to see is a little more specific about in certain areas. But there probably won't be many, many major changes and I would certainly let you know if that happens. But I'm happy to answer any questions or find additional information for you. But this is really meant for your information at this point, the big part being about the compensation for teachers as well as all staff.
Back on the debt service, remember when they refinanced and they used the high school as collateral?
Yes, ma'am.
And when they did that, they took ten million for a communication system? Is this showing that?
Yes, it, I, I did verify that with Ms. Fleming that it is. That's why you see an increase there. What they did is I guess go back in and it's almost like if you're refinancing your house, they pulled all the equity that was in the high school. And so it's inside of that. But I, I don't believe that their, I don't think their debt is inside of that. That just shows the high school part of it.
So this debt is just our building debt and not their ten million dollars?
Right. They just used the high school as collateral in order to get that. But it was really, they were doing it real, they were doing, what they do with debt service is really smart. Because, you know, as the debt continues to drop, so does the payment usually. But what they were doing was they kept the payment the same regardless of how low the debt was getting, which is really smart. It's almost like paying yourself an extra house payment or so throughout the year. So it builds your equity up really quickly. And that was one of the things that the DAV important company recommending that they continue to do. Because, you know, how else will we be able to do some of the things that they've been able to do in the county without having that access to that? But yeah, that's just our debt. Other questions or comments or?
I don't have any questions, but I do a, a comment, I guess. I have noticed, um, just looking at the news and reading the papers, that surrounding localities are raising teachers salaries. And, and each time I hear it, I, I get a little nervous that somebody might be looking across the road, you know, at something else or down the way. So prayerfully this will work out for us. I hope so, that we will be able to retain our people that we have and, and be more compatible, competitive with the surrounding areas.
I mean, I know that you've read, you know, Henrico and Chesterfield, I believe, both of them, the, the raise actually came from the county. Well, they, in Henrico, they work differently. If they get a, if the county gets a raise, they, they work in tandem with one another. But some teachers will get an eighteen percent increase, I believe, in Henrico. And, but you know, I do believe smart people can work anywhere. And I think if you take care of people the right way, money is important, but it's not the only thing. If people can go to work and they feel like they're doing really great work and you value them and you, you're taking care of them, their benefits are good. And sometimes it's always not about what the paycheck says. The paycheck is a great thing, but it's not the only thing. So it's, sometimes it's taking care of the bigger picture thing. And I think what I, you know, we're trying to do is also just show all the other benefits about working here and the benefits of working in a small community. Because I will tell you, I mean, this past year's been a really tough one. But I, I venture to guess that it's been a little easier on us because it has felt a little bit like a family trying to work together and work through things and, and lean into this work. It's been very different. And so hopefully they see the benefits of that.
Do we know if our county is going to propose, what kind of raise that they will be proposing?
Well, I'm meeting with Mr. Massengill in the morning. I do anticipate that he will because he was prepared last year to implement. He had just gone through a salary study. They finished last spring when he found out everything, when, everything happened in March. So he was prepared to implement that last year. So I would anticipate seeing something five percent or more from them. Because it's been quite a while since they've done a salary study there.
Well, usually they don't like it to be a big difference between what we're offering and what they're offering.
That's right. I would, I would anticipate it would be more just about the salary study. But I will be meeting with him in the morning and I'll share that. You have to have the meeting.
But I'm concerned about our students in this year, the students who have missed, you know, maybe some, some teaching, some learning. Will there be money in here to, to help bridge the divide?
Yeah. So you're going to, Dr. Gurley's going to be coming forward very soon to prepare, first of all, what the summer's going to look like. Well, he's already started working on what, what learning looks like right now in an effort to, to provide kids with the support that they need. I'm encouraged by the number of kids that are wanting to come back to school and work face to face with teachers. But they have a really, a rigorous summer program that typically we used to run just for older kids. And he's going to be running a K-12 program in the summer to provide young people the opportunity. And I love the way he, he's, and not to, not to do any spoiler alerts, but he's, he's got it kind of done in like chunks of time versus, so there's a two week and then a two week and a two week, you know, so, you know, because some teachers don't want to work like a full six or eight weeks in the summer, but maybe I can do two weeks. So you can get some of the teachers that you don't necessarily, he's got a great team working on that already. So you'll be hearing about what the summer's going to look like. As well as what the calendar's going to look like for the next two years. He's going to be bringing that forward as well. So they've got a lot of plans in place for how to, how to support young people. And one of the things I didn't mention in here, part of this funding does include, remember before you, we had talked about those support positions that we felt like were necessary, you know, in order to support our young people. There's funding now in this new budget that supports, support positions, funding for three per every thousand additional positions to help, so the social workers, the student services coordinator, positions like that that we are putting in to help support our young people, those positions can, will now be funded versus us having to pull positions from other places. So that was good news and smart thinking on our part. We're meeting with the principals on Thursday, so we'll be talking with them further about what their needs are relative to this new information on the budget.
Uh, the budget that you're proposing, does that include the summer school at all?
It, it, it's not going to include all of the summer school because the funding that we get from the state is for remedial summer school. And even though we probably could make it all work, it's not as much money as what we would need to have. So some of it will come through the CARES funding that we'll use.
Well, and quite honestly, the reason why so many kids are behind is because of the pandemic and that money goes to support the pandemic.
Yes, of course.
And because some of them have not been so successful via the internet instruction.
And some school systems automatically build in summer programs that are more bridges versus, you know, remediation. It's just more of a, because learning loss is about twenty percent over the summer. So if you offer something in the summer, and I think, you know, they've done camps and things like that in an effort to kind of keep that. It's not kids that are necessarily failing, but they might be pretty well behind if we don't do something in the summer months. So you'll see some of it in local funding, but you're also going to see a lot more of it from using CARES funding.
Can we use CARES funding this summer for transportation?
Probably because, yeah, I would think so. Yeah. What do you think, Christine? She's become our, she's.
We just have to be careful that we don't supplant anything. So if we were already.
Doing the summer program. We could do it for the program. So we always do a high school, right? A high school, like a great credit recovery, right? So we could possibly do it for like the elementary, you know, for the kids that have been virtual learning and they need it. So we just have to make sure that we're not trying to replace, taking the CARES money and replacing something we're already doing in an effort to benefit us.
Right. But the transportation piece is paramount to many of the parents. It's a barrier, right?
Yeah, Christie's and Christie and Christie are, they're our CARES experts.
Mr. Tucker does a great job and the director of being very innovative. When we have, because we're always using different pots of money. And so if the buses are already running for something, then, you know, you can get creative and figure out how to make more than one program work at the same time. And so, you know, just utilize and do those, which we do that anyway.
Well, they've done a phenomenal job taking Kissimmee, I mean, they, yeah.
Is Rwanda going to have a summer program?
I don't, I don't know that. I don't, I haven't heard that. Thank you so much.
Good thinking.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.